San Carlos City Council Meeting for April 25, 2016. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We had a very tragic event over the weekend. And before we jump into the regular business, I thought we should talk about that first. And so I wanted to invite our Chief of Police, Greg Rothas, to come up and tell us a little bit about what happened and kind of where we're going from here.
Good evening, Mayor Johnson, Members of the City Council. Greg Rothas, Police Chief. Yeah, I'm here tragically to report on the death of a San Carlos resident. It occurred Saturday night. Our units were dispatched to a hit-and-run accident in the 2100 block of San Carlos Avenue. When we arrived on scene, we found the victim on the street, and our deputies began CPR immediately. But unfortunately, the gentleman succumbed from his injuries as a result of the collision. We obviously began immediately an active investigation, put out whatever information we had to allied agencies. And, you know, through a little bit of luck and some good work, we were able to locate and arrest a suspect in this case. And we were able to seize his vehicle as well. So we have the suspect and, you know, and his vehicle. Obviously, this is something extremely rare in San Carlos and very sad and very troubling. It was a situation where a city council, this city council, probably invests more per capita in traffic safety than maybe any community in the county with our two dedicated traffic deputies. And we'll be coming to talk to you about that again tonight. So certainly, a lot of support from the council on traffic safety. An awful lot of work on our part on DUI enforcement. We've arrested about 100 people last year for drunk driving. And one of our deputies, Deputy John Lothian, will be receiving the Hero Award this year in San Diego from the Mothers Against Drunk Drivers for all of the DUI efforts that he's made as a deputy, and he is assigned here in this county. We take this offense very seriously. We are extremely proactive, and we make a lot of arrests for it. And we have a deputy in San Carlos who's being awarded by the Mothers Against Drunk Drivers. And yet, despite of that, it's just a situation where, you know, if somebody's going to get drunk and they're going to get behind the wheel, not a lot of safe places to be if they're going to cross your path. And unfortunately, that's what happened in this case, and it's very tragic. As soon as that accident occurred, we called out our Major Accident Investigation Team. This is a group of highly trained, specialized people who are designed to investigate major accidents. They have probably some of the most complex and academic training that police officers go through, and they have to, we fly them all over the country for this training. Their job is to put that scene back together and to collect any and all kinds of evidence that could be associated with that case. And I want to talk about the investigation, except to tell you that no stone is being left unturned. This investigation is not over, that we intend to continue to investigate. There's a lot of work to do, and we'll do whatever it takes to get all the evidence that we need in this case. So that's where we're at. And again, I'm sorry to have to report that to you tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions that any of my colleagues wanted to ask? I can just say personally, you know, I was extremely heartbroken when I heard this over the weekend. It just seemed like a big tragedy for our community. And I wanted to ask if we could just take a moment of silence out of respect for the gentleman who lost his life and that our thoughts are with his family and friends who are grieving right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks. Okay. We'll now move on with the business of the evening. Are there any changes to the order of the agenda?
Not this evening, Mr. Mayor.
So we'll move on to Item 4, which is Council Communications and Announcements. You'll note the absence of one of our colleagues, Ron Collins, who was unable to join us tonight. And for Council Communications and Announcements, we'll start with Mark. Thank you, Mark. Matt?
So I attended two meetings between this council meeting and the last one. One was the Airport Roundtable. The Airport Roundtable is working on some changes that were made to the flight approach from the Pacific. And I see Brian here in his office knows a lot about this issue, that it's caused the change in the flight patterns that have been instituted have caused some problems for the Santa Cruz communities and from there to the north, really, till about Menlo Park. And so we're trying to work with the FAA on what we might do to move forward. I don't think they're going to want to go back to the old way, unfortunately, but what we can do to move forward to mitigate the noise issues that communities are experiencing that they didn't experience before. This is an example where, you know, it's not anything that affects San Carlos specifically, but the whole idea of the roundtable, when it was instituted, was not to move flights around in such a way that one neighboring community would benefit to the detriment of another neighboring community. And it seems that, in essence, is what has been done, and so we want to try and fix that. It's going to be a pretty big project, I think, probably entail a number of meetings. The meetings that will happen are open to the public. And probably the best bet, if anybody's interested in what's going on, would be to contact Jackie Speer's office, and she could fill you in. And by the way, Kathy, when she gave her presentation, she's something else, because she got up to the mic, no notes, no nothing, and just told the whole story, gave the full presentation, answered questions, and did a tremendous job. So our kudos to Kathy and her abilities. Another meeting I attended was the Office of Emergency Services, and they are working right now on a countywide plan to, for response to emergencies, hazards, as they're called. And the idea there is cities are required to, cities in the county are each required to submit their own plan. But this county's approach has been to work together through the OES to develop a plan, and then it'll be up to each city to provide an annex report to that plan. And so I would assume our staff is working on the annex report and is very much aware of what those issues are. And again, if anybody would like to access that document, they can do it either through the county, if you want the full document, and I imagine you can access it, our annex report, when it's in the draft form through the city. I think that'll be coming to council for a public hearing on our annex portion of it?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So that'll be an opportunity for the public to weigh in and ask questions and so forth on that topic.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Bob?
I have nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I have a few things to share this evening. Crystal, if you wouldn't mind pulling up, I brought some pictures, as always, and it's been a month since we last met. Couple weeks ago, we had the opportunity to break ground on the new landmark hotel site, which is going to be Marriott on the corner of Industrial and Holly. This is a 200-plus-room hotel with meeting facilities. It's estimated to bring in about $1 million in revenue to the city every year, which is really wonderful for us. It allows us to improve our parks, repave our streets, without asking residents for any additional revenue. Here's a picture of what that hotel will look like, and you can see Highway 101 behind. It's going to take about 13 months to construct the hotel. This is a culmination of a really great work by our city staff, a lot of ingenuity to be able to make a very complicated deal involving lots of different property owners. Work at a time when our main economic development tool, the Redevelopment Agency, had been dissolved by the State of California. So, you know, it's a real kudos to Jeff for his leadership, to Al, working with a developer to create what I think is going to be a great asset for our community. This is a slide that's very difficult to see, and I apologize for that, but next, the first week of May, the Transportation Authority is going to vote on new shuttle, funding new shuttles. Transportation Authority is a board that I sit on that provides money for transportation, infrastructure, and services throughout the county. What you can see, if you squint, is that among all the new shuttles in the county, the staff is recommending two for San Carlos. One is called the San Carlos Commuter Shuttle. It's going to pick up a Caltrain and do a loop on the east side to east side businesses. The goal is to reduce single occupancy trips into San Carlos, so that people will take Caltrain, and then they can take the shuttle to Novartis and so forth. The other one is money that's going to be used to fund a new Samtrans bus line, and it's up here, it says San Carlos Community. And that's a project that a number of citizens in town have been working on very diligently, along with Councilmember Olbert and myself, to revive an old bus line that once existed in San Carlos that goes up into the hills and then out to Carlmont and Tirolinda. It's a bus line that we hope will provide an alternative way for kids to get to school and help alleviate traffic congestion in between Carlmont and Tirolinda, which is backed up. So this is going to come for a vote at the first week of May. Peninsula Clean Energy, which is a new initiative by the county, which San Carlos and all 20 cities in the county have voted to join, is moving very quickly. I believe we've had at least three meetings since we last met in the city council. We've done things like appoint a citizen advisory commission, put out an RFP for energy services, submit an implementation plan to the California Public Utility Commission, an executive board was appointed. I'm one of the, I think there are about seven of us that are sitting on the executive board. And so, you know, it's moving very quickly. The goal is to roll this out in the fall. What it will do is allow residents and businesses to have a choice in being able to have electricity that has a higher renewable content, and to do so at or below the price that people pay to PG&E today. So it's a very exciting thing for our county. I wanted to note that we, I think at our last meeting, Fire Chief Stan Mopin was here, and we did a badge-pinning ceremony. So he has been promoted from running the San Carlos Fire Bureau up to running the entire Fire Department for Redwood City and San Carlos combined. His replacement at the San Carlos level is a gentleman, a 20-year veteran of the Redwood City Fire Department named Dave Pucci. So I wanted to welcome Dave to the city of San Carlos. I had an opportunity to have coffee with Dave this morning. We spent about an hour chatting. I found him to be a really thoughtful, great guy. We had a very frank conversation about fire services in San Carlos, what we can do to improve them, and about, you know, the overall cost of public safety and how that's a big share of our budget. But I think we have a really good person, so I wanted to thank the selection committee. I know Chief Rothas served on that selection committee, and it seems like we're going to be very well-served by Dave. I had the opportunity to cut the ribbon on a new business in San Carlos. It's a jazz club, which I think is pretty damn cool, I have to say. So this is the former site of Clooney's, is now a jazz club that used to be located in San Francisco. The proprietor, who's a jazz musician, is a Redwood City resident, and he moved his business to San Carlos. You know, this was, there were a few bumps in the road, I would say, and I see Chris Valli's here in the audience in helping this gentleman get his business open, and I appreciate the staff being self-reflective about how we can best provide, you know, community service. And I'm happy, you know, to report that we've helped him get his business open, and my wife and I are planning to go check out some jazz music on Saturday night. I was invited to a ceremony for the Girl Scouts. I think it's the Peninsula Division, but it was from Redwood City, Belmont, and San Carlos, where they awarded the Bronze Awards, Silver Awards, and Gold Awards. Gold Award is kind of the equivalent of an Eagle Scout Award on the Girl Scout side. We had one awardee this year. Her name is Morgan Mantar. What she did for her final project was to map the trails at Eaton Park and to create physical and digital signage for parkgoers, which I think is a really cool project. Even cooler is that her brother, for his Eagle Scout Award, actually built the physical structure that the signage goes in at Eaton Park. Morgan has started college, and so she couldn't be there to accept the award. So her father, Lee, was there to accept the award. And Lee has now raised a Girl Scout Gold Award recipient and an Eagle Scout, so I told him I thought there should be an award for that. And then I brought my daughter, who hopefully will win. It seems like she was riveted the entire time for the multi-hour ceremony, so I think I have a future Girl Scout on my hand. But it was really great to see all the fine community service that's being done by the Girl Scouts throughout San Carlos. Ron Collins and I, on a lighter note, attended the 2016 Progress Seminar, which is a gathering of San Mateo County elected and appointed officials in Monterey. And the evening festivities were cowboy-themed, and we took a photo in the photo booth. That's Ron's wife, Gail. But our keynote speaker was Congresswoman Anna Eschew, who talked a lot about, you know, some of the dysfunction in Washington, and made me feel relatively good about how well we do things on the local level. And then there were a number of breakout sessions on really important topics. One notable one in particular was talking about the housing crisis and things that other communities up and down the peninsula are doing to try to address the problem with housing affordability. So lastly, just briefly, you know, as I've been talking about throughout the year, I've had an opportunity to treat my service on the city council as volunteer service and to donate the salary that I get. For the first two years, I donated back to the city. But this year, because I'm serving as mayor, I'm trying to take an opportunity to highlight different organizations in the community that are really doing a great service to our community, and to do so by donating my salary for the month and encouraging others to get involved. So this month, I'm highlighting the Kiwanis Club. So I think a lot of people know the Kiwanis. They were founded in 1947, and they sponsor, they do a lot of things for our community, but I'll just highlight a few. They sponsor youth services clubs, such as the Builders Club for middle schoolers and the Carlmont High School Key Club, that help teach young people about the importance of community service and getting involved. They provide college scholarships to high school students in San Carlos. They help run the Caring Cupboard, which provides free food to low-income seniors. Overall, club members donate about 3,000 hours of volunteer service to our community each year. They do a holiday toy drive that helps collect toys for needy children. They do a Child Safety Day, where they teach children and parents about safe behavior. My daughter has gone to this. They check, you know, car seats and bicycle helmets and things like that. Then they also have a lot of fun, too. You know, they host charity dinners, and they have the annual Kiwanis Show, which is a charity event to help raise money to further their community efforts. So I wanted to make the community aware that they're holding an event on Saturday, May 14, at the Adult Community Center. It's a live and silent auction called Lights, Camera Auction to benefit their work. And if you are interested in joining the Kiwanis Club, they're always looking for new members. I wanted to put this up on the screen for folks who are here or watching at home, but you can check them out on their website at sancarloskiwanis.org. And, you know, however it is that you, as an individual, want to help give back to our community, you know, this year, I hope you'll take some time and opportunity to do that, and this is one great way to do it. And that is all I have tonight. So thank you very much. So now we'll move on to Item 4B, Staff Comments on Administrative Business. Mr. Malley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council. Just a reminder that on April 29 and May 6, at 10:00 a.m., we'll be having budget hearings right here in the council chambers. Those meetings are open to the public, so if you'd like to attend, please feel free to come down and join us. We'll also be broadcasting those meetings on the television channel and the city's website. On April 29, we'll be doing an overview of the city's revenues and expenditures, as well as all the administrative internal departments, city council, city manager, city attorney, finance, HR, that sort of thing, as well as police and fire. On May 29, we'll be covering community development, public works, parks and recreation, and the city's five-year capital budget program. May 6, I'm sorry. May 6, we'll be doing this. So thank you very, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I hope we'll see you all at our budget hearings.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay. We'll move on to Item 5 tonight. We have two city proclamations to hand out. One of them, the first one, because our meeting earlier this, the first meeting of April was canceled, we're actually retrospectively recognizing April 13 through 23, 2016, as West Nile Virus and Mosquito and Vector Control Awareness Week. And I believe we have Betsy Schneider, come on up, Betsy. Good evening. So I'm just going to give you this proclamation. So as many of you know, you know, we, the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District, works on behalf of our county to eliminate the threats that we have from pests and insects that carry diseases. In particular, this year, we're highlighting West Nile Virus, and I'll briefly read this. It says, "Whereas West Nile Virus is a mosquito-borne disease that in 2005 sickened 783 Californians, 53 of whom died," which is twice the number of deaths that occurred then in the previous year. "Whereas West Nile Virus and Mosquito and Vector Control Awareness Week will increase the public's awareness of the threat of West Nile Virus and of the need for integrated management of mosquitoes and other vectors in San Mateo County. Be proclaimed that we do hereby declare that the week of April 17 through 23, 2016, be recognized as West Nile Virus and Mosquito and Vector Control Awareness Week in the city of San Carlos." And so I'll give you that proclamation. Thank you. Thank you very much, Betsy. Thanks for being here, and I'd like to invite you to say a few words, if you wouldn't mind.
I would like to. Good evening. I want to give you an update, a brief update, on the Zika virus. As of Friday, there were 35 cases in California and two in San Mateo County. All of these cases were travel-related, and one was acquired by sexual contact with someone who got the virus during travel. This Zika virus is spread by the 80s, egypti mosquito, which is very, very aggressive, and was actually pretty much eradicated in the 70s, San Mateo County. But it is coming back. There's not a huge population, so you don't need to worry about the disease being spread. And the Mosquito and Vector Control District is very aggressive about checking samples and going door-to-door and checking for mosquito pools and doing mosquito samples. However, we really need the cooperation of the residents. So what you really need to do is check your own property, your backyard, after rain in particular, or if your sprinklers are situated. If there are any, it's a container mosquito. So if you have any containers that are holding water, you need to empty them out. The egg can actually live for about 10 years and be reactivated with water in a few years from now. So it's important to keep the water not in standing, you know, not in your containers. We had some issues last year with the same mosquito with yellow fever scare, and we went door-to-door in Menlo Park, which was where it was. And it's pretty well under control, so we don't need to worry about that. I'll tell you, in 2015, there were about West Nile Virus. There were 23 positive dead birds, one in San Carlos. There were five positive mosquito samples, none in San Carlos, and there were no human cases. So if you need any assistance with anything on your property that you're concerned about, you can always call the San Mateo Mosquito and Vector Control District, 344-8592. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Betsy. Thanks for being here. Our other proclamation this evening is to declare April 30, 2016, as Earth Day in San Carlos, and to let people know that we are having an event, an Earth Day event at Burton Park, this Saturday, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. You know, I think as Northern Californians, we feel a special connection to our natural environment, and the city of San Carlos has been a leader and has been recognized recently with an award for the work that it's done to increase energy conservation and environmental stewardship in the Bay Area. We also had a big success over the past couple of years responding to the drought, and our community has really stepped up and conserved water, and we far exceeded the targets that were set by the State of California. So we've got a great record. I think we have a lot to celebrate, but it's also an opportunity to increase awareness, to let people know about things that they can be doing in their home or their business to help the environment. And I think it's going to be a lot of fun, too. So I hope folks can come out to Burton Park on Saturday at 10:00 a.m. And with that, we'll move on to Item 6, Public Comment for Items Not on the Agenda. I have two speaker cards this evening. I think I have a third. Okay. And our first speaker this evening is Muly Kumar Swamy. Good evening.
Good evening. So my name is Muly Kumar Swamy. My wife and I moved to San Carlos about a year ago, to a house in Holly Street, and we were expecting our first child, and we thought this would be a great place to raise our child, and it'll be a wonderful community, and it has been in many parts. My daughter is about eight months old, and, as you can imagine, she's the most precious thing in our life. A month ago, we had an incident where a driver lost control of the car, and they came onto our front yard, few feet from our nanny and our daughter. It was pretty shocking, and I think probably what shook me more was, like, you know, we saw signs of this happening. I've seen drivers knock off our trash can when, like, right in front of me. I've seen side-view mirrors on our front yard. I've seen drivers, like, who are three feet away from me, looking at their phone, coming around the curve, and there's nothing much we can do, because cars are allowed to come a few feet within our house. So I know there's been a lot of measures that have been taken. We can see them. The speed limit has been reduced. I've seen signs that say, "Want the cars," but the fundamental problem is cars are too close to the sidewalk, and it's not, I don't see a solution other than not letting cars get closer to the sidewalk. So I want to thank the city for taking some measures, but I would encourage you to go further.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker this evening is Penelope Greenberg. Good evening.
Good evening, Council. I live on Begu Drive, and I'm on the Nextdoor Network. I know all of you have heard of that. And am I okay to talk?
Turn the timer.
Promise not to go two minutes.
You're off the clock.
All right, great. Anyway, everyone has been quite concerned about the accident that happened on Saturday, and there's been a lot of discussion about the lack of a sidewalk along that part of San Carlos Avenue. And I sort of volunteered myself to come down and express the concern that a lot of people have about the lack of a sidewalk on there. I don't know what the city's planning to do, and I hear that the budget meeting is coming up soon, and maybe that would be a good time for people who are concerned to come and voice their concern. come and voice their concern. Also, we live very near Beverly Drive, and that's another accident waiting to happen, especially that curve. I've seen a nanny push two little kids in a stroller around that curve, and it just takes one driver looking at a cellphone or something to wipe out the three of them. So I would encourage the city, the council, to look at that quite seriously, both those areas, and do what we can. I understand that financing is an issue always, but I think there are enough people who think something should be done that hopefully there'd be enough support for paying for it. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Priya Joseph.
Hello, strangers. I've repeated all of these statements over the course of the time that I've been in San Carlos over and over again. And, you know, you've heard what Muly said. It's the same place where I fell last year jogging. So it's just unsafe. If I, I mean, I've told you guys this. I put my hand out, somebody's gonna, you know, just wipe out my hand driving on Holly. I don't know how you guys could have made it four lanes. You just can't. It needs to be a complete street. It's just insane to think 1,000 feet is going to fix the regional growth. So, I mean, I was in Harbor Boulevard this morning. There's absolutely no traffic. It's like six cars at 8:00 a.m. You should come to Holly at 8:00 a.m. I mean, come at any time on Holly, right? So you have to encourage the 101 traffic, freeway-bound traffic, to be on non-commercial streets. You have so many avenues now. Just go on Nextdoor and post it there, and people are going to follow. So, I mean, you know, it's easy to, I know that you, you know, Bob, you had a question for me at the TNC thing, that, you know, it's hard to change people's behavior. I mean, if you don't make the effort, how do you expect change, right? So, I mean, it's so hard to back out. I mean, it's just insane. So, I mean, I really wish you guys would think about public safety. Walk on our street. That will educate you. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Darren Batara. Good evening.
Good evening, Council. My name is Darren Batara. I am a new resident of San Carlos as of, since November. I live on San Carlos Avenue at Devonshire in Mollington, and had the unfortunate experience of being one of the first people to arrive on the fatality that happened three, four houses down from me. Hearing sort of the general consensus from a lot of the people who just spoke before me, this is an important issue. I think I'm new to the, I'm new to this city of San Carlos. I have two children, a two-year-old and a newborn, and I, after speaking with several neighbors over the weekend, I find it a little disturbing that is reputable as this city is in terms of all the services that we have. I do think that there is a need and a focus to shift on the public safety in and around traffic. San Carlos Avenue is very dangerous, and I've had conversations with my wife that we are not to walk on that street at all. And I understand that we are experiencing heavy growth into this area, and so there's obviously a lot of give and take that there needs to be done to balance the traffic, bicyclists, pedestrians. So I don't know that there's a really great answer to it, but I do think that there's a need for some awareness, particularly following this incident. This is a very tragic incident, and that poor family and all the friends that are in there, and the two children who have to live with this. At this point, it's hard for me to be up here, but I just don't want to have to experience that with my own children. And if there's anything that I can do, or anything that the citizens can do to help, you know, amplify this situation or bring awareness to it, or whatever we need to do to make this better, I would be happy to help out and volunteer time, efforts, whatever resources I could do to help, you know, add to the good reputation of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. I really appreciate the comments and your willingness to help out. I have no other speaker cards. Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight on public comment? Okay, then we will move on to item seven, approval of the consent calendar. Consent items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There's no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council staff or public request specific items to be removed for a separate action. Is there anyone who would like to remove an item from the consent calendar? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. We'll move on to item 8A, a public hearing, consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing adjustments to the cost of services schedule or our user fees for fiscal year 2016 through 2017. Ms. Mendenhall? And I have the clicker.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. Before you tonight is the consideration of the annual user fee update. To establish these fees, a comprehensive cost allocation and fee study was performed with the assistance of a third-party consulting firm in May 2013. The study was performed over the course of several months and included a thorough review of all direct, indirect, or overhead costs, activity volumes, and time spent by staff to perform each activity. Revenues from these fees are collected through several different software systems, and then are reconciled and reported into the budget line items. The revenue is specifically associated with each fee as part of the comprehensive analysis and will be included in the next cost allocation study, which is currently scheduled for early spring of 2017. Since conducting a comprehensive fee study is costly and time-consuming, the industry best practice for review of fees for service is to complete it every three to five years, and between studies to use an annual increase mechanism such as CIP. As per the previously adopted council policy and best practices, the majority of fees have been increased by the Consumer Price Index West, which was 2.9% as of February 2016. The result of the rate increase and the few recommended changes, which I'll talk about in a moment, resulted in a net increase to revenue in the general fund of $40,000. This estimate has been incorporated into the proposed budget that will be presented later this week. The new fees will be effective July 1st, 2016, as a minimum 60-day notice is required for development fees per California Government Code 66017. So although council policy is to increase the fees by the CPI, there are some instances where staff has recommended changes. In the Recreation Department, in order to maximize facility rental opportunities, staff has recommended restructuring the fees to include hourly rental on weekdays at both the Adult Center and the Youth Center, rental fees for non-residents, non-refundable application fees to cover time spent with applicants in the event of a cancellation, and an update to the existing rental fees to be competitive with neighboring agencies and market rates. In the Police Department, staff is recommending discontinuing the alarm permit fee. This fee is $32 per location, and its charge to the sheriff's office can maintain a list of emergency contacts for dispatch. Feedback from the homeowners and the businesses indicate that they feel this is a duplicative charge, since they already have to maintain this information with their alarm providers. The administrative efforts required to collect this fee and to respond to complaints and inquiries has increased dramatically over the past year. While we recommend eliminating the fee, the sheriff's office will continue to collect the information and manage the program at no cost for those who wish to continue to participate. The annual loss of revenue from the alarm permits is estimated to be $50,000 and is offset by the other estimated increases of $90,000, leaving a net increase to the general fund of 40. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Rebecca. Questions for Rebecca? Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Rebecca. Actually, just have a couple of questions. One is, first off, thank you for changing the alarm fees. That was something I know we talked about during the issues a couple of months ago about the home burglaries. I wanted to make sure, though, that we, are we still retaining, I guess, their fees or fines if your alarm system creates too many false alarms?
Yes.
We are keeping that?
We are keeping that.
Okay. I mean, not that we want that to happen either, but we need to provide an incentive for folks to make sure their alarm system's working. Good. Glad to hear that. My other question actually is for Greg. Just as a, I think I know the answer, but as somebody who pays an alarm fee, because I have a house alarm, am I allowed to vote on this, or am I going to have to recuse myself?
I think this one would fall under the public generally exception, so you are allowed to participate.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Other questions? Bob?
Rebecca, so most of the fees were raised 2.9%, but you restructured the, and I'm trying to look at it here, but I'm not picking it up. What increase, or were there increases in the parking rack, or just, when you say restructure, what do you mean?
Well, part of it was to add the weekday fee, because we didn't have that before.
Okay.
Amy's hearing can also speak to some of the changes, but we were looking at them to make sure that they're more competitive with our other agencies.
I was just trying to get an estimate of, I mean, you raised it 20% average, or 30% average, or 10% average, or 5% average, or 2.9% average? I'm sorry. Numbers guide.
That's okay.
It wasn't a set percentage that we based the fees off of. It was more of just being competitive with neighboring agencies, specifically Redwood City, Foster City, Menlo Park, that have similar facilities. And then also with the renovation of the Adult Community Center, identifying what new rooms that we could utilize to rent out for private parties, for nonprofit meeting groups.
I get all that.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to understand. It costs, before we do this, it costs X. What does it cost now?
I don't have a set percentage. We can look at the individual fees.
I'm just, nobody ran, so that's okay. I don't actually run the numbers. I'll do it myself or get it later. But I'm just trying to understand. It cost $1,000 before. What does it cost now? $12,000 for the whole thing? I mean, the whole parking rack? Do you understand what I'm saying, Rebecca?
If I may, can I ask a clarifying question that might help? So I did look at this, and it used to be a flat fee regardless of who you were and regardless of what day of week it was. Now, and this is just for clarification, now we have separate fees for weekdays versus weekends, and we have separate fees versus if you are non-resident versus if you are a resident or a nonprofit. Is that right? Okay. So I think, and in some cases, the fee has gone down. So if you are, for instance, a nonprofit, you want to rent some of these rooms, it's less than it was before. Is that, is that the case?
In some cases, yes.
So I think it's complicated to answer.
No, I understand. I just assumed that they would know what the number was.
Through the chair. Just for what it's worth, my sense was, given the structural changes, it's actually not possible to answer that question.
Yeah, it could be.
You know, because it depends, are you renting on a Wednesday or a Thursday?
And each room has an individual cost.
I get that. I'm just trying to look at, last year, we collected X dollars. This year, we plan on collecting Y dollars, because it's the same. In other words, if you did, if the business this year is the same as last year, what's the dollar amount? That's all I'm trying to look at. So you didn't run it. That's okay.
Well, with the renovations, you know, we're anticipating things are going to take off as well.
Okay.
So it kind of will all balance out. We're waiting to see what happens this year.
Never mind. I'm obviously way past my concept here, so never mind. It's not big money here. Just asking. So never mind.
Any further questions, Bob?
No.
Okay.
I didn't do too well.
Matt, do you have an additional question? Okay. Matt, any questions? This is a public hearing. Are there, I have no speaker cards. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I think we need a motion to close the public hearing.
So can I make a motion and we close the public hearing?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2016 dash?
37.
37, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos authorizing adjustments to the cost of services schedule, user fees for fiscal year 2016, 2017.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I'll just, yep.
I just, so I didn't want to ask about this, because it's not really a question, but just as a matter of discussion, I'm pretty aware that in Chris Valley's department, the building department, the numbers that are being used for estimated value of construction are, they're hard to keep up with in today's world of construction, because it's pretty fluid, but it's mostly an upward trend. And so what we're doing currently is we're using a fee that is charged per square foot of construction cost, but that construction cost isn't really in with what the market is doing. And if we adjusted that, we could actually lower our fee, because what we're really trying to do is recoup cost. But if it, if it were, what I'm saying, and I see Chris thinking about this, you know, bottom line, you take a per-square-foot fee, and you charge it based on how much you think the cost of the project is. But our estimates on the cost of the project is lower than actually what the market is telling us if we looked at that. And I don't know what we should necessarily, what we could do about that, except actually do a study of what are the true costs of construction, and then we would, we could adjust, our fees would actually get adjusted down, because you're using that multiplier times the cost of per-square-foot.
Mark, did you want to comment on that?
Yeah, just, I think, if I remember correctly from last year, the large study that was done to create the set of user fees that we had, which are, most of which are being increased by the inflation metric this time around, did encompass that, to the extent that it could. I mean, the problem is, as you said, Matt, I mean, the construction costs change all the time. And unless we were to do studies all the time in practice, we have to pick, we have to pick a benchmark that we measure things against, and then pick a rate that generates the amount of revenue to cover our costs. And since you have both a numerator and a denominator in that, you can almost pick lots of different combinations of numbers. So, you know, personally, I don't feel strongly motivated to go do a lot more work here unless it turns out that staff finds it's a real problem.
Yeah. Chris, you want to comment?
The Chris Valley Building Official. The, the dollar per-square-foot multiplier was, it's a number that's been around for quite a while. And other agencies, when that, I think with the last fee study we did, I emailed around a bunch of my cohorts, and we came up with a reasonable average of all the numbers I was getting from, anywhere from, you know, Menlo Park all on up to South City, for the most part. So that, that square-foot multiplier is utilized, for the most part, if we have someone at the counter who says, "Well, I don't know what my valuation is," you know, so we have something that's council-adopted that we can utilize to, you know, figure a valuation for the project. Other times, we get people coming in with their valuation, and we, you know, it appears reasonable, so we accept that. But, but it's, it's, it's something used when, when there's, when we don't have the, the valuation presented to us, so to speak. To slightly comment on Mr. Obert's point, to utilize construction cost per square footage, per square feet, in some instances could put us in the $800 per-square-foot arena. And I'm not sure how reasonable that is. So that's how we came up with this number, if that makes any sense.
Is there any differential that's used for, you know, when you're looking at smaller projects, especially, you know, if it's just a kitchen and bath remodel sort of thing? And those tend to be more expensive projects because of finished materials and those kinds of things. However, the other part of that, you know, like what I find in my business, when you're dealing with a small project, there's still, there's things you have to do regardless of the size of the project. And so you're spending time on it, and I'm sure you guys find the same thing. Your staff time is being spent, sometimes on a smaller project, it's not as efficient. So is there any differential that's given to that? Because I can guarantee you the square footage cost of those kinds of spaces are higher than when you look at overall, you know, addition or even new house or whatever. That, let's say that's 250 a square foot, you know, construction cost. But if you just honed in on the bathroom and the kitchen, you could be looking at 400, 500, 600, $800 a square foot, depending on what's going on there. And like I say, those kinds of projects, I suppose, you know, just because it's a more intense space, like for instance with you guys, you've got plumbing, you've got electrical, you've got- you've got, you got a lot of little moving pieces that your guys have to go out and check.
Yeah. The plumbing, electrical, and mechanical, those are all flat fees that we assess for those smaller projects. And then, of course, there's a square foot multiplier for those fees as well, once we get to a certain square footage of type X project. I do know that San Mateo, for instance, has, does have, I believe, fat, flat fees for those projects. And, you know, that's something to think about. I believe we are having a fee study coming up soon. So I, there's been a few ideas bantered about on my end, and there's some ideas being tossed around for specifically, actually, the kitchen and bathroom remodels and to try to streamline those as well, both plan review and perhaps even fee-wise.
Okay. All right.
Anything further, Chris, or Matt?
No, it was just something that, you know, even before the meeting, I was thinking about, and I wanted to bring it up and see where it went, so.
All right. Thank you, Chris. Any further comments from the dyes? I'll just say, you know, I appreciate the staff looking for opportunities to, you know, incentivize the kind of behavior that we want in town. I think cutting the alarm fee is great, and hopefully it will lead people to get some additional alarms. I'm happy to see us restructuring the rental fees so that we cut a break to nonprofits and to residents because we want people meeting and having parties and having, you know, building community, so I'm really happy to see that. And with that, Crystal, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Gasilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. With that, we'll move on to new business. Item 9A, consideration of appointing city council representatives to the Select Committee on South Bay Arrivals and the Park and Rec Public Art Task Force. Mr. Malpe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city's been asked to place this item on your agenda for this new Select Committee on South Bay Arrivals that was put together by our own, very own Congresswoman Jackie Spear. I know you, as our mayor, have had some involvement in the process, I believe, as well, Cameron, so if you'd like to talk a little bit more about it, be happy to.
Yeah, I mean, there's not too much to add, except that, and I know that Congresswoman Spears, representative, is here this evening, that the Congresswoman, in conjunction with a couple other Bay Area congress, members of Congress, is looking at getting feedback from local communities about airport noise. And Brian, actually, if you wouldn't mind, if you want to say it much more eloquently than I could. Thank you.
Well, I doubt that. My name is Brian Perkins. I'm the district director for Congresswoman Spear. There have been a lot of complaints about recent reorganization of the Skyways, if you will, in the Bay Area, and these are largely noise complaints that, as Councilman Grokot alluded to, stretch from roughly Santa Cruz to Menlo Park. However, we are getting some complaints from folks along Crestview here in San Carlos, also really along the 280 corridor. So the FAA has agreed to look at the problems and try to create yet another set of solutions. This original set was supposed to actually be noise-sensitive, if you will, turned out to be, from our perspective, noise-insensitive. The problem went from being in a longstanding corridor to now metastasizing across the hillsides. But in any event, we're going to see if we can get this committee together, which will include appointed members from three different congressional districts for the approaches. And that committee will then review what the FAA has identified as feasible choices for yet another bite at the apple, if you will, another way to approach San Francisco Airport. It becomes important because we also have related problems from all other airports here in the Bay Area, San Jose and Oakland. So it's a big game of three-dimensional chess, and we're trying to make sure that our folks here on the approach side of things are taken care of, and that's what the point of the Select Committee is. The San Carlos Council is being asked to provide an alternate in the event that the three main folks who are assigned or one of them is not able to make it. So I'm prepared to answer any questions if you'd like. There's also a longstanding roundtable, as Mr. Grokot mentioned, it's going to be handling the departures, and each committee can take a look at the other's bailiwick as well if they wish. Any questions?
Thank you, Brian. Any questions? So we discussed this at the previous meeting, and I noted that my name is actually down here as well, and I think Bob had volunteered, and I don't, I don't need to be on this one, so.
Okay.
And then I, it looks as though we need a volunteer for the Park and Rec Public Art Task Force.
That's correct. We're also asking for that.
And do you have a sense of what the time commitment for that is and when that task force is going to meet? And while Amy is coming up, is there any, anyone here who's interested?
So we have the utility box art project coming up, and two Parks and Recreation Commissioners are on the committee, the resident and Annette Caves is on the committee, myself will be served on the committee, and then we'll be asking for one of the council members. We are looking to meet sometime in the next two to three weeks, just review the forms that are going to go out to the community. We're looking to launch it hometown day's weekend and then request that all forms be submitted and artwork submittals be turned in by the end of June, review those, and then identify which art boxes are going to be painted by which artist. So I don't anticipate a huge time commitment, but just probably a few meetings between now, maybe three or four, three, between now and probably mid to late summer.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Amy.
Mr. Mayor, I nominate Ron Collins.
I'll second that nomination, unless there's anyone else who is, wants to do it. Okay. I, this, is there anyone who would like to speak on public comment on this item? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to appoint, I think you said Mr. Gasilli, as the primary and--
Voted.
I think that's sufficient.
Just as the primary to the Select Committee on South Bay Arrivals and Ron Collins as the representative to the Parks and Recreation Public Art Task Force.
I'll second that. We have a nomination and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gasilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. We'll move on to item 9B, consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing an expenditure not to exceed $90,000 in supplemental law enforcement service funds to be used to support frontline law enforcement services. Chief Roethlis.
Good evening, Mayor Johnson, members of city council. Approximately five years ago, the sheriff's office had one dedicated traffic deputy, and the city council decided they wanted to double that and increase it to two traffic deputies. And since that time, we've been able to use cops grant money, which we receive in the area of about $90,000 a year, to fund that extra deputy position. And so each year, I come before council to make that request, to use that grant money, that, that grant is really at the council's discretion to use, and that is my recommendation that that is how we use it. And in each of the last five years, the council has decided to go ahead and do that. This request has to be made outside the normal budget cycle, so that is why it's not occurring at the budget hearing, because it's actually stated it must be outside the budget hearing. So that's, that's my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, chief. Questions for the chief? Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, chief. The question I actually have is not about the specific proposal, which I completely support. I think we've gotten a lot of value out of it over the years. But, you know, just like we have the, the approach where there's a task force, a multi-community task force that comes in and does pedestrian-related traffic safety stuff, saturating an area, do we do any, are there similar programs for the motor cops, basically, for the actual vehicular enforcement side of things?
Yes, there is. It's called the saturated traffic enforcement program, and it's a program that we have here in San Mateo County. And it is, in fact, it's been so successful that we've received grants to continue that. Fifty percent of it is funded by, by grants. And we all get together, and we will take off and maybe 12 to 18 officers will focus our traffic enforcement in one community. And so San Carlos has been the benefit of that. We've had that traffic enforcement program in the community on several occasions. And in fact, usually when it happens, either myself or the city manager hears about it so that, hey, what's all the deputies and, or police officers in town? And that's our saturated enforcement. We've also used that not only for, just for general traffic, but we use that for driving enforcement as well. We've done that.
When, when you and your colleagues in the law enforcement enterprise are getting together for that program and evaluating it, given the, the increased concerns or frequency of complaints that we all tend to hear, and I suspect this is true in other communities on the peninsula as well, about traffic-related problems, is there ever any thought given to, gee, should we think about trying to find some way to expand this program or expand it in whatever way, like so it can saturate areas more frequently, it can be a bigger saturation? I don't know how you'd do that, but--
Yeah. Well, first of all, you're right about the issue of there being complaints in other communities. I mean, I've worked in several communities, and the traffic complaints are the same. Every, you know, people complain a lot about it. It is a top complaint, especially in a congested area like the Bay Area. And so the answer to your question is, yes, we do sit around and talk about that. In fact, that's how we doubled our enforcement efforts with the STEP program. We were able to present a grant and basically, you know, grant, people who authorize grants like the kind of matching, they like you to have some skin in the game. So we said, look, and we're going to continue with our enforcement if you will pay for an equal amount, and we'll pay for our half and you pay. So we've doubled our, our STEP enforcement as a result of that.
Okay. Let me just leave it then, as individual council member at least, I would ask you to be on the lookout for ways to perhaps increase it even beyond where it is today. And, and I'm sure there's a, there's a point of diminishing returns, which I look to you as an expert to decide where that is, but if it's a matter of resources and whatnot, I'd ask you not to hesitate to come back to us and at least ask.
Okay, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any other questions for the chief? Is there any member of the public who'd like to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2016 dash?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos authorizing expenditure not to exceed $90,000 in supplemental law enforcement services funds, S-L-E-S-F, to be used to support frontline law enforcement services.
Second.
Rochambeau?
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gasilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. With that, we'll move on to item 9C.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes, sir.
May I just add some comment I forgot to make, which is that--
Please do.
Chief, I hope that you will extend all of our regards and support to Sergeant Pettit, who went above and beyond the call of duty today in, in using his vehicle to get a rather crazily driven other vehicle out of harm's way. Could have been very, very bad. I trust he's, I heard that he's, he had only minor injuries, so.
Yes, he was just checking up. He didn't want to go to the hospital. I took him anyway. I ordered him, and I drove to the hospital, but he's fine. He's uninjured. And if he didn't do what he did, that could have led to that.
That was my, that was my sense from what Jeff described to us. So anyway, I just, I hope he makes a speedy recovery from whatever minor injuries he has.
He was back to work by after.
There you go. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, chief. Thanks, Mark. All right, we'll move on to item 9C, consideration of adopting a resolution funding a traffic study for general plan environmental impact report traffic update. Mr. Savay.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. The San Carlos General Plan and Environmental Impact Report were adopted back in October of 2009, and the EIR traffic study that was done for the general plan in early 2009, it was done during the last recession, and the traffic analyzed existing conditions and then projected the future growth that build out in 2030 of the general plan. But what we've seen is that in recent traffic studies conducted in San Carlos, and we're also seeing this in a lot of other communities, is that because of the robust economy, that baseline that we studied is now much higher. And so one of the key elements that we see right now is a need to reassess what it means to the anticipated amount of growth that we see coming online in San Carlos with our general plan and with this new baseline information. In addition, the California Environmental Quality Act has changed the way that, or the methodology by which we will be doing traffic studies and evaluating traffic as per development in our communities. And they switch from what we used to call level of service at an intersection to vehicle miles traveled, that it's, so it's a different methodology. And so officially, SEQA is not going to be doing that anymore. They're not going to be doing level of service at intersections anymore. We can still use that as a determination of how traffic works in our own community, but in terms of SEQA, EIRs, and things like that moving forward, we need to evaluate what it means to use VMT and how it will affect San Carlos. So with these things happening now, we are seeing that we would like to recommend a new traffic study be done for our general plan EIR, reevaluate it, and look at this VMT idea from, from the state and see how it works in San Carlos. And so we're recommending that you allow the city manager to do a contract for up to $125,000 for this work. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Al. Questions for Al? Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Al. I hesitate to ask this question because part of the reason you're doing the study is to actually be able to answer it, but do you have any sense perhaps from, maybe if there are other communities that have switched to studying VMT as opposed to level of service, for what kinds of shifts you tend to see in terms of how the EIR impacts a community?
So the, what we're seeing is that the VMT concentrates more on vehicle miles traveled and emissions from vehicles, and it encourages things like building closer to transit. So it's sort of a different, it's a paradigm shift in the way traffic is viewed to a, maybe a broader level, broader level or a larger focus as opposed to, you know, how our intersections work. So right now, that's kind of what we're seeing.
I guess if it, just one follow-up, when I, when I saw this and read the staff report, what was, I was having a little difficulty understanding is intuitively, when I look at the level of service metric, and I look at it in the context of development decisions, there's a notion of you're trying to manage the level of service at some level, right? And so you can go back to somebody and say, hey, you have to do various mitigations because otherwise this is going to get really bad. VMT sounds like it's sort of one step further removed from that?
Yeah.
Or is it, is it just vehicle miles traveled within the community? Or do you actually count when somebody drives to Hayward to go to work that that's a vehicle mile traveled, vehicles mile traveled?
You know, it's so new that I honestly don't have an answer for you, but we're going to try and figure that out.